Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the latest and greatest Governance and Transparency Committee meeting. All members of the committee are in attendance. We've got some special observers today, councillor Ireland and councillor Tully. There being no apologies, I'll move on to the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the land upon which we meet. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging, as the keepers of the traditions, cultures, and stories of a proud people. Do any councillors have a declaration of interest to make this morning? Alright, that being the case, no business outstanding. Right around confirmation of minutes, we've had some discussion with some members who aren't in our committee, so I'd like to move that item 11 be dealt with first this morning. Is there a seconded for that? Seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion on that? There being no discussion, I'll put it to the vote. Those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. I don't believe we actually need a suspension to allow, of standing orders to actually allow councillor Tully to speak, but happy to receive advice. We wanted to discuss principally, I think, the meeting on October and how to arrange that around the LGAQ conference, and also just tidying up these breaks between meetings, as they're a bit extended at times. Does anybody have questions of the relevant officers? I'm happy for you to speak at any stage, councillor Tully.
Should we move in seconds so we can move into discussion, Chair?
Well, in committee meetings, it's a little less informal, so... That was a double negative. Alright, well, you can move it if you like, Mayor.
Happy to move item 11.
Seconded by councillor Doyle. Councillor Tully?
This is pretty simple. I mentioned earlier in the break that there's two ways of doing this, having, this is proposing that each meeting occurs straight, immediately after the conclusion of the previous meeting, without any break at all, and also sets fixed times for morning tea and lunch. But what I'm suggesting to the committee is that we maintain the 10-minute break that we've had, and then add the words that I've, so you'd reinsert that into the calendar, and then the words that I've just emailed through to everyone. It's sort of have the 10 minutes or such later time as determined by the preceding committee meeting, or such later time. So that the example would be what we've just had, the GIW committee, that would be empowered, or the meeting before, like this committee could be empowered then to, or such later time as determined by the preceding committee meeting. That would give complete flexibility for what we're trying to achieve, rather than zero breaks and stuff like that. So it would be 10 minutes unless there was a later time. The only other thing I would suggest, and I'd sent this through, I think it was to Mr Wade Wilson, it was the local government conference next week, next year in Gladstone, the, I'm just trying to pick this up now. Yeah, at the end of October, but it concludes the day before, the local government conference concludes the day before the council meeting in Gladstone. So I was going to just suggest either it be deferred until the Friday, the following day, the 24th, I think it is, of November, October, I'm sorry. No, that's not right. The 20th of October, or you could have a later committee meeting round, you know, the week before the local government conference, and then have the council meeting on the, no, not the date it said.
So you look at the committee meeting moving to the 12th?
Yeah, that'd be one possibility, and the council meeting would be the 20...
Twenty seven, twenty six.
Yeah, either of those would work, yeah.
Do any members of the committee have any views contrary to councillor Tully on this?
None, I guess as the mover, I would support the wording that councillor Tully's put up about the 10-minute break remain or such times as determined by the proceeding committee, and put that in that meeting daytime, I guess, column for each of those meetings. I think it might be a bit more elegant to check with the CEO, but yeah, I agree with councillor Tully, to move the committee meetings by one week might be a more elegant solution, if that's okay with the CEO.
I'm sure it's fine, so committees would be...
The 12th of October?
Yep. So like we have in some other times, just having that one week gap between?
And move the 19th of October, full council meeting, to the 26th of October.
Yep.
So there's still the two weeks.
Yep.
Nothing jumps out as being concerning with those dates, yep. Could I just make a comment through you, Chair, in relation to the proposed wording that councillor Tully's put forward, just in terms of the spirit of entire flexibility? It says or such later time, which would mean you couldn't make it earlier? Would you want to just say each committee meeting or such time as determined?
I thought about that, Chair. The, such time, it could theoretically, you could have it being brought on earlier or something like that, or, and you wouldn't want the preceding committee to override the 10-minute break by saying it's starting, you know, in 30 seconds. So it's only 10 minutes, but it's a guaranteed 10 minutes, which I know from past experience, most councillors wanted, but it could be a later time, might only be 15 minutes, but, yeah, I did think about that, but I think it's got some, you know, difficulties as well.
I guess with being pedantic, and also it's a later time that, it could be...
Excuse me, Chair. Sorry, do we just say such other time?
No.
I think councillor Tully was intending to say that it's other 10 minutes or more, not to make it list.
Chair?
Councillor Milligan? Thank you. I would also suggest that we double-check that we're not writing a procedure that is in contravention of the regulation.
Chair, I don't think, I think, you know, we're masters and mistresses of our own destiny to be inclusive. No, but can I just suggest this? If that goes through, we've got two weeks to test that against various criteria before the council meeting. I think that's the easy solution to all these, all these, you know, alternatives.
I don't intend to discuss this matter ad nauseam this morning, but I'd be comfortable with a five-minute break between committees, just because across the five or six committees that we have, that's an hour of breaks, and quite often it's not required the full 10 minutes. So I'd just suggest that, but as always, subject to deliberation by the committee.
Thank you, Chair.
Through you, Chair, just to clarify, and I think you're aware, but in response to councillor Milligan, we're fine with the regulations. It is open to the councillors through the committee and council.
Alright, so we've had a great discussion this morning. We've got our new recommendations up on the screen, the meeting clerks split them up to D and E for clarity, just seeking on item C if we actually want 10 or five minutes.
I guess maybe I'm just hearing from some people they want five or 10. I'm hearing that there's still some councillors who'd like to have 10 minutes.
Yeah, that's fine.
So just leave it as it is, yep.
Alright, well, councillor Doyle and councillor Harding, do you agree to the what's up there?
Yes, I do.
Those extra recommendations?
Yes.
Councillor Tully, as our observer today, is that sufficient to what you were concerned with?
That fits perfectly, but if you made it five minutes, the preceding committee could decide to make it 10 in a particular case. It doesn't have to be for a full lunch period, so I'm easy. It's the sort of thing you can never tweak at 100% right.
Yeah. Alright, well, I think that's been a good discussion. Does anybody else have anything to speak on this matter this morning? That being the case, I'll put recommendation A through E to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. So we'll move on to the actual first item today, the confirmation of minutes of the Governance and Transparency Committee meeting 13 October 2022. Any questions of officers on this? No questions, I see councillor Milligan was keen to move that, seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion on those minutes this morning? I'll put that matter to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item two today is the Operational Plan 2022-2023 Quarterly Performance. Any questions of the officers? Mayor Harding, call on whoever's present and best able to answer that.
Chair, I have some questions about Ipswich Waste Service.
Scanning around the room, unless the chief is okay. Oh, Mr Madigan's up the back there. Hey, Sean? Sorry. Just noting the specific branch manager isn't present, we may have to put that question on notice.
My understanding is that they were notified, but, okay.
Good morning, councillors. Sean Madigan, General Manager of Infrastructure and Environment.
Thank you, Mr Madigan. I'm just looking at the Ipswich Waste Service part of the performance report. It says page 32 or 41, but I think it's page 31 of the actual report. I can see there's under key result area, achieve operational excellence, request and replacement for repairs actually within five working days. Our acceptable standard is 85% to 95%, and in September it was 27%. I know I've got new waste trucks, I'm just wondering what's the approach from the organisation to address that?
Yes, certainly. So the, in explanation, the reason for that low result was, as you're aware, as a result of us being unable to source new trucks. We had, you know, multiple breakdowns, which was causing us issues in terms of picking up people's weekly rubbish and recycling. We had to reprioritise what we were doing, so in terms of getting around to bin repairs, we were prioritising actually picking up the waste and recovery, and also issuing new bins, so ensuring that every new dwelling had new bins to service them. That percentage is predominantly relating to repairs to bins.
Yes, it is.
So that was considered at the time a lower priority than actually servicing the waste and getting new bins out to residents. We have just received seven new waste trucks this month, with a further, I think it's about 16, to actually be delivered prior to the end of this calendar year. That will then enable us to get back to regular service and to meet our customer service standards.
Thank you for explaining that. Thank you, Mr Madigan.
Any further questions from the committee? Thank you, Mr Madigan. Just seek a mover for the recommendation that the report be received and noted, moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Kuncelmann. Any discussion this morning from the committee? Mayor?
If I may, Chair, I do note the increases to curbside recycling, it's quite, plus it's quite a large jump. Our community is recycling more, and I can see that of the five performance into key result areas, four of them of the five are actually, have been exceeded. So I just want to say it's great to see our community do that. I think some of the communications and education that are doing that community is paying off, so that is great to see. And I would concur with the situation that our Ipswich Waste Service found itself where they prioritised waste collection over bin repairs. I would thank you very much for, you know, taking that sensible approach.
Any further discussion from the committee this morning? That being the case, I'll put the matter, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item three today is the Quarterly Report to the Department of State Development, Infrastructure, Local Government and Planning. Do any members of the committee have questions for the relevant officer on this? There being no questions, I'll seek a mover of the recommendation, there's only the one recommendation there, moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Kuncelmann. Any discussion this morning? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item four today is a procurement matter for Oracle Service Cloud Right Now License and Support 2023. Just noting, I've received a update here that the dollar value in recommendation B needs to be amended to 600,000. I think that's all that needs to be amended, is that correct? Do any members of the committee have questions on this item? There being no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B, moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion this morning from the committee? There being no discussion, I'll put matters A and B, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item five today is the Drug and Alcohol Councillors' Policy 12-Month Review. Any questions this morning from the relevant officers, for the relevant officers? Councillor Johnic? Alright, I'll leave it to the CEO to identify who will answer that.
Mr Wilson, our Manager of Executive Services, is making his way forward. Thank you, Chair.
Good morning, Mayor and councillors. Wade Wilson, Manager of Executive Services.
Thanks, Wade. Just under the purpose in the executive summary, sorry, it's got the voluntary, voluntary testing is available to the mayor and councillors before every committee and council meeting. I just wanted to clarify, is that something that has been communicated to us previously?
As per the provisions of the policy, voluntary testing is available to any councillor at any time. There have been some councillors who have undertaken voluntary testing, and they have been occurring prior to committee or council meetings historically. So from a matter of convenience, they are available easily prior to a committee or council meeting, but of course, one can be scheduled at any time on a voluntary basis.
Oh, okay, so I understand as part of the policy that voluntary testing is there for us whenever we seek it, but then this is the first time we've actually been notified that it's easily available to us before every meeting and committee?
Yes, and that was only made aware to us when we were undertaking the review of the policy as to the frequency of the voluntary tests that had been undertaken. So potentially the wording of that could be adjusted a little bit to make it more apparent that voluntary testing is available at any time. However, it's convenient to be done prior to a meeting, as some testing has already been occurring at that time. So the officers who administer those tests are available and frequently doing that at that particular time.
And is this a cost to council?
Yes, there is a cost to council, and as per the report, those costs will be attributed to the individual councillor where they're undertaken. Emphasis on the word will there, because we're still waiting finalized costings of this specific kit, kits, and the exact dollar amount of those kits. In the Transparency and Integrity Hub, there is a line item already showing a bulk purchase of a number, I'm not sure of the exact number of kits, for councillors generally. The finance team, once we have the detailed information, will break that down on the hub to show each individual allocation per councillor as those voluntary tests are undertaken.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the committee this morning?
Yeah.
Councillor Doyle?
Sorry, thank you, Chair. I'm not entirely clear on the process for the voluntary testing. Were we given the details of how that can occur?
Happy to circulate some more details to all councillors to make that a little bit clearer. When the policy was implemented, in the training undertaken, it was left us an open-ended, any councillor can elect at any time, basically via the CEO or your support staff, put your hand up and say I'd like to undertake a voluntary test, date and time, immediately, et cetera.
Okay, yeah, that would probably be handy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Wilson. Alright, I'll just seek a mover that the, it says that the policy be as detailed in attachment one be adopted. Seek a mover from the floor this morning. Moved by Mayor Harding, seconded by councillor Kuncelmann. Any discussion on that matter this morning? That being the case, I'll put the recommendation to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item six today is the Community Engagement Policy and Strategy Update. Just noting that got some changes recommended here to split that recommendation up into two, so that'll appear up on the screen and provide a bit of extra clarity. Does the committee have any questions of the relevant officer on this report? That being the case, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B, give you all a moment to read it. Moved by Mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion on that matter this morning from the committee? There being no discussion, I'll put matters A and B to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item seven today is the Flood Recovery Resilient Homes Fund Voluntary Home Buyback Proposed Property Acquisition. There's three recommendations there. Are there any questions of the relevant officers on this one? There being no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A, B, and C. It's moved by councillor Johnic and seconded by councillor Milligan. Any discussion from the committee this morning? Councillor Johnny?
Keeping it all very confidential, I just want to praise the team internally for the way that they've brought about the tranches and putting through vigorous measurements to ensure that even though not everyone can be captured, it's quite a difficult task to achieve, but I wouldn't want to be in that position myself, but I really, really appreciate the time and the excruciating detail that's gone into these reports. It's really commendable, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Johnic. Thank you, councillor Johnick. Mayor Harding?
May I, Chair, I concur with councillor Johnick, and I want to thank the state government, in particular the QRA, they make the final decision on which properties and they have been outstanding, working with our local residents, they've been fantastic.
That being all of this morning's discussion, I'll put matters A through C to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item eight today is the disposal of council freehold land, access restriction strips located at lot 406 and lot 403, Irana Street, Redbank Plains. Do any members of the committee have questions for the relevant officer? There being no questions, I'll seek a move for recommendation A, B and C. Moved by mayor Harding and seconded by councillor Doyle. Any discussion on those disposal of land? That being the case, I'll put the matter to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item nine today is a disposable interest in land for easements over part of 13B and 15 Hague Street, Brassel, for Urban Utilities Sewage Treatment Plant located at 13 Hague Street, Brassel. Are there any questions on this matter? There being no questions, I'll seek a mover for recommendation A and B. Moved by councillor Milligan and seconded by mayor Harding. Any discussion this morning? There being no discussion, I'll put recommendation A and B to the vote, those in favour, that's unanimous and carried. Item 10 today is a new lease over 3133 Nimmo Street, Bevall, to Queensland Rolling Stock Preservation Group Incorporated. Just seeking if there's any questions of the relevant officer on this matter this morning? There being no questions, we've had some discussions throughout the week and I've got two proposed amendments here in front of me, recommendation A, that the matter not be dealt with, and recommendation B, that a further report outlining existing and new information be submitted to a future governance and transparency committee. Seeking guidance from the committee as to what they'd like to do there.
Thank you, Chair, I'm just not sure at this stage the, whether B is actually necessary because, you know, further information has come to light, I'm just conscious that it may not need, this particular transaction may not need to come back. So if, if we leave B in, although there is no time or date applied to it, it's almost an ongoing obligation for it to come back to committee at some point and... I would have thought this item not be dealt with and, and a new matter might come before us or not.
Yeah, councillor Doyle, I've put that up for discussion just to seek guidance from the committee. If you're happy to move item A alone, I'm more than comfortable with that.
Chair, may I ask the CEO for her advice on this? Can you move a matter that's not, to not be dealt with, or is it, do we have to vote it down just from a procedural perspective?
Procedurally, I think that's fine. I wouldn't mind asking our general manager, Corporate Services, for advice though, do we need to bring part of this matter back or... Yes, thank you. Is that okay through you, Chair?
Good morning, Chair, councillors, Matt Smith, General Manager, Corporate Services. In terms of needing to bring part of this matter back, I think, as has been discussed, I think not considered today on the basis of further information and our review on that, there may be a determination that it may need to come back or may not, so I don't think there's any part of the recommendation that we would need to bring back to, may not need to bring back to committee, so I think it would be acceptable, there's no part of the recommendation that would necessarily need to come back pending our review of the additional information.
So it sounds like A would be fine to stand on its own?
Yeah, satisfactory.
And, and if, if there is a new matter that comes about, that would come to us?
We will bring it forward.
I would agree with councillor Doyle, I think, as we said, it's a, it's a review based on some additional information, anything that would come back would most likely be a new matter if it needed to come back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr Smith. So if you're comfortable with moving that item alone, councillor Doyle, I'll seek a seconder this morning, seconded by mayor Harding. Any discussion on that matter before we proceed to a vote? There being no discussion, I'll put the matter, those in favour, that's councillor Madison, councillor Kunselman, councillor Milligan, councillor Doyle, councillor Harding. Are you okay, councillor Johnick? You look a bit confused.
I'll just abstain, thank you.
Okay, those against, none, those abstaining, councillor Johnick. We've already dealt with item 11 today and, you know, flipping through, so that's all of our matters for today. I'm not aware of any notices of motion or matters arising. I'll call the meeting to a close at eight past 11.